The June 5th, 2023 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Please stand as I deliver the invocation. Also, please consider praying in a manner that is consistent with your own faith and beliefs. Your Father or God, we pray for all of our leaders and public servants, even our citizen servants, who strive to seek good each and every day for this county. May they serve the people with genuine care and compassion, inspire them to always seek the common good. May they be your instrument of bringing peace, justice, and harmony to our society. For all these things, we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
At this time, we will now open our invitation to the audience. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Council, we did receive one submission. However, it is definitely budget testimony on the FY24 proposed budget, so I have moved that to that particular folder, and we will include it in the posting that we do before the June 14th.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone who signed up ahead of schedule for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that is not on the printed agenda at this time? Please come up, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. I see the Dean of the Council, Ms. Julie Johnson, is approaching. So...
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I am working on trying to help go to get us through this pile of papers because I have asked you to take a look at a problem that I've dealt with for a while that is a really serious problem. I was accused of having junk and debris in my yard and to a degree that it was a zoning violation. It's okay to be messy, and still, you know, it can be messy, but, you know, it's not a violation. You have to do certain things to be a violation. And so I've given you some of the papers, you know, from the case, and I'm asking you to think about what can you do in a legislative way so that nobody else goes through what I went through. So you have the copy of the citation that they gave to me, and you'll notice the inspector didn't provide an affidavit. It's not required. But if you go forward and you look at the document that's titled "Request for adjudication and demand for judgment on affidavit," then that becomes a problem, and it became a problem because they had a number of affidavits, but there was no witness. Therefore, the judge had no evidence. But that didn't bother the judge. He signed it and found me guilty, fined me $500 and $45 for costs. But that's not a kosher deal here, folks, because, you know, you have, you understand, you've got to have the evidence. It's facts in law, and it was quite a job though to undo that. And today, much to my shock and horror, I found something that I had not noticed before. There is a real database that's called Maryland Judiciary Case Search, and I printed out the records of, you know, because that has the dates and who was there and, you know, what happened. So here's this thing that said, you know, that I had been found guilty, and not only that, but it said this will, you know, this will terminate in 2030, 12 years later. That is, I'm guilty that whole time, and they can come back after me. So that's a concern, and I think that's something you might want to look at.
Thank you.
And then you might want to think about how we could modify this request for adjudication, or excuse me, rather, the demand for judgment on affidavit. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else came to the table, the public hearing, or sorry, invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Let me have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole.
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Sir, second.
Rodvian, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of May 15th, 15th, 18th, and 30th of 2023.
Minutes of May 15th, 2023. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Rodvian and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. Minutes of May 18th, 2023. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:02 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Ledbetter and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held at Crofton High School. Minutes of May 30th, 2023. The meeting was called to order by Vice Chair Pickard at 11:00 AM. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 15th, 18th, and 30th, 2023?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Sir, second.
Rodvian, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. The minutes of May 15th, 18th, and 30th, 2023 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 5123, An Ordnance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anarundel County Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes. Bill Number 5223, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate Public Facilities, Adequate School Facilities, Affordable Housing, Workforce Housing, School Utilization Chart. Bill Number 5323, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Solar Energy Generating Facilities. Bill Number 5423, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Credits, High Performance Buildings. Bill Number 5523, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes, Codes and Supplements, Fire Prevention Code, Zoning, Recovery Residences, Group Homes, and Community-Based Assisted Living Facilities.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2223, Resolution Approving the Nomination of Members to the Anarundel County Human Relations Commission. Resolution Number 2323, Resolution Approving the Submission of a Name for the Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board. Resolution Number 2423, Resolution Approving the Appointment of a Severn River Commission Member.
All right, unless there's any objection from the council, we will vote on Resolutions 2223, 2323, and 2423 later this evening. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 1923.
Bill Number 1923, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Bring Your Own Bag Plastic Reduction Act.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you very much. I know we've spent an enormous amount of time on this bill. I never thought we'd be all the way here in June. So I thought one thing I would share for my final pitch is a letter that I received from a young man, a third grader at Windsor Farm Elementary School. He's in Kelly Sokol's English Language Development class. And he says, "Dear County Council Members, we should stop using plastic bags. First, the plastic bag kills the environment and then hurts the environment. For example, the plastic bags aren't biodegradable. Next, it kills the animals. Animals get food and eat plastic and die. Thank you for reading my letter. Sincerely, Hussein." And he really does kind of get right to the point, and so I think we should heed his advice and pass this bill this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Tricia?
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Don't think I can say it better than the third grader. I do have our experts at the table who you've gotten quite used to seeing over the past couple of weeks on this bill, Mr. Michelson, Ms. Velez, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer, so here to answer any technical questions, but our support remains strong. Looking forward to putting this bill in front of the county executive to sign. Thank you.
Any comments from council members? Seeing none. So we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1923. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Members of the Council, we did receive a handful of testimony on 1923 that is trying to come up here. Okay, I'm sorry. It was four submissions that we received through the online testimony tool. Everyone here received a copy via an email. It's included in a summary that is posted online, and it will be added to the record.
All right, thank you. We'll now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time on Bill 1923. I do have three that have signed up. That is Ms. Gabrielle Sanchez, Bernie Robinson, and John Breen. Yes, ma'am, please come to the table. All right, Ms. Gabrielle, please, two minutes. State your name and address for the record, and then...
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Sanchez. I'm here on behalf of Clean Water Action. We are expressing our support for eliminating plastic bags and reducing single-use bag use, but we're also urging that the council adopt an important provision to the code to address the impact that this legislation will have on low-income residents. In the Washington and Lee Law Review, Stephen Johnson reasons that low-income individuals and families bear the undue burden of environmental reform regulations, and our most vulnerable populations are expected to adhere to new and changing environmental regulations, even when doing so can mean the difference between eating and going hungry. Adopting environmental reform in ways that do not disproportionately burden people that are already overburdened by environmental problems is the right thing to do. We have shared with the council a proposed addition to the bill that would mitigate a significant disproportionate burden posed by the fee on paper bags included in this bill by exempting transactions using SNAP and WIC from the paper bag fee. This is important federal, I'm sorry, this is important because federal rules dictate that SNAP and WIC benefits cannot be used to pay for this 10-cent paper bag fee, which means that without an addition to this bill, residents relying on these programs to feed themselves and their families will be required to pay that incurred bag fee with cash. Many people relying on these benefits might not be carrying cash or have cash available to pay, and ultimately may need to haul their groceries in hand, either using public transportation or walking, as a lot of folks who are on SNAP and WIC might not have reliable personal transportation. And this can be a special, this can prove a special, sorry, this can prove especially restrictive to individuals who are affected by mobility issues. We want reusable bags to be used as much as possible, and we should, but we shouldn't be placing a higher burden on those complying with the bill who use SNAP and WIC as opposed to those customers who are not relying on those programs. So we are asking for provisions that do not put an undue burden on those low-income individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Bernie Robinson, lead for the CR Club Anarundel Group Zero Waste Team. On behalf of the thousands of our Anarundel CR Club members and supporters, we support Bill 1923 as is. There's no such thing as a free bag. Their cost is part of the retailer's overhead and the price of merchandise. Of course, there are environmental costs as well. Litter plastic bags remain in the environment for lifetimes, degrading over time into microplastic particles that absorb toxic chemicals, polluting our natural areas and house dust. They're impossible to remove. It has been documented that humans and wildlife are ingesting these particles via waterways and air. Bag litter is an eyesore, a blight. The use of plastic bags is detrimental to both our visual and live environments, public health, and welfare of our county's citizens and visitors. A hidden cost will be removed. Shoppers who take bags from the point of sale will pay for them, and shoppers who bring their own bag will not. Also, the use of paper bags will be greatly reduced. Paper bags are costly and carbon sequestration from trees and exact significant environmental costs in production. It is time for our county to incentivize use of reusable bags. Reduce plastic waste by passing Bill 1923. The Anarundel Group of the CR Club urges you to pass this bill tonight. Thank you.
Sir, thank you.
I filed a written one-page statement some time ago, so I'll be brief. Focus on who's being injured. That's us, the people here in the room, after we eat the meat from the fish in the annuals that are bearing plastic, microplastic cinder. Microplastic pollution in the oceans and the waters goes between 4 to 12 million metric tons a year. That's in the ocean alone. There are studies on the effects on human beings with low numbers. NOAA in Silver Spring, Maryland is conducting a longer study, but that data is not a dead of that. So with a sample of 17 to 22 people, there's a professional study published by a university in Europe, and they found 17 out of 22 healthy people, souped up, walking down the street, had microplastic particles in their blood. There's a nutty study formed, I believe, in the United States, published in the Journal of Polymers, granted a small number of people, I forget if it was three or five, and they found microplastic particles in mother's breast milk who were nursing their children. So there's enough initial data to say this is a threat to human life, and so I want to support with my loud testimony that third graders letter, Lisa Rypian, with no further comment, I won't diminish this statement.
Thank you all, please, for your testimony and return to your seat. Is there anyone who did not sign up in advance that would like to speak on this bill? Please come forward at this time. This will be the last call, and please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes to speak as well.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Cania, 853 Rutterway, Annapolis. I wasn't sure if I could testify tonight because I was at the graduation for my granddaughter from high school, from Savannah Park High School, and she is heading off to the Coast Guard Academy. So I'm very proud grandmother tonight, and I'd like to be really proud about this bill passing, so just, okay. So you've heard a lot of things over the past several weeks. By 2050, there'll be more plastic in the oceans than fish. Plastic bags are mistaken by sea turtles as jellyfish, their preferred food, causing them to slowly suffocate to death. You've heard from many constituents from throughout the county that they support the Bring Your Own Bag bill. You've heard that behavioral change is not difficult. You've heard that a vast majority of shoppers in Anarundel County currently use single-use plastic bags as they are convenient and appear free. You've heard from retail establishment support for this bill, and in fact, many of them are already using alternatives or provide nothing. And you've heard that plastic bags are not free. I also want to bring one more thing that I think is really interesting. The city of Easton has a bill that's very similar to this one. It went into effect April 2nd of this year, and based on a survey of large-scale retail establishments, seven large establishments alone have kept over 1 million bags out of circulation for one month. So 1 million bags in a month. So we can do the same, and I really, really hope we get unanimous support on this. I'd like to see every single one of you, and again, I owe you a bag if you vote for this, so thank you very much.
Hey, my name is Joanne Soler, and I live in Glen Burnie. Tonight, we have a historic opportunity to reduce plastic waste in Anarundel County by eliminating the distribution of single-use carryout bags in our county and encouraging shoppers to use reusable bags for their grocery and other shopping. Bill 1923 will leave our trees, roads, waterways, and landfills free of the 215 million plastic bags discarded in the county annually. Single-use plastic bag waste is a bipartisan issue as an overwhelming majority of our county residents, both conservatives, liberals, and everyone in between, favor reducing our plastic bag waste. Certainly, no one would consider passing this bill to be an impulsive act with little thought to its implementation. I have witnessed the progress of this bill since early April as the county council carefully considered all aspects of commerce in our county, amending the bill for both clarity and specificity in each meeting. All members of the county council were actively engaged in considering what was needed in each case and voted carefully on each thought-out amendment. I was glad to see such good bipartisan work, and I commend each and every one of you for actively engaging in consideration of this bill so that we have finally a bill that will work once passed. Tonight, we have an opportunity to reduce plastic waste in our county. The bill is finally ready for a vote, and I encourage the county council to boldly pass the bill and improve the quality of our environment for all of us.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sarah Price, resident of District 3, but here on behalf of the Maryland Retailers Association. I just wanted to quickly speak to the proposal that was given to address concerns about customers who shop with SNAP and WIC. This is an issue for the retail industry because it is illegal for a cashier to ask a customer if they will be paying with benefits for their purchases. So customers who are shopping with benefits, if an exemption were to be included for them, they would need to self-identify before the transaction is carried out. And as far as I'm aware, at least in the largest grocery chain in the state, their point-of-sale system does not, there's no pop-up or anything if someone uses an EBT card for their purchase. That is not reflected until the receipt is actually printed out. So if that customer does not self-identify, then there's no way for the cashier to know just through the system whether an exemption would need to, you know, whether they would need to be, if the fee would need to be removed or not. We also expect that different retailers would be impacted at different levels if an exemption were to be included. Not every grocery store has a high number of customers with benefits, while other grocers in the state have reported that at least 40% of their transactions do use benefits. So that would introduce unnecessary competition between the businesses if some would have to absorb a much higher cost for bags than others. We are always supportive of any efforts to allow grocery stores to provide reusable bags during a promotion period or to donate bags during a drive, maybe if the local Department of Human Services is making collections, anything like that, we are very supportive of. So we would urge passage as the bill currently stands. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the public hearing on Bill 1923 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1923. Sorry about that, just sort of looked up.
Bill Number 1923, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Bring Your Own Bag Plastic Reduction Act.
Just before we vote, I wouldn't to take a minute to thank all of my colleagues for all of their thoughtful work and, you know, the amendments to help make sure that we got this just right. I really appreciate it when we can work cooperatively and in a bipartisan fashion, and so I hope for your support in the final vote tonight. And thank you to everyone who's been working on the bill from the admin team as well. Your work has been greatly appreciated.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take an opportunity to thank my colleague, Ms. Rodvian. She's done a tremendous amount of work before introduction and then championing the bill through to this point, so I just want to thank her for her work, and I look forward to supporting this bill as we go forward.
Any additional comments? Oh, Ms. Fiedler, you're like, what's up? Nope, because you had to turn it on and off.
Thank you. I'm on and off, and on and off. Thank you. I just want to say a few things before we go to a vote here this evening. I so appreciate Ms. Sanchez coming up to testify because the small portion of general opposition that I have heard is regarding the fee structure. I've heard some folks prefer that we should have charged for the plastic bags. I've heard some folks say no charge at all. So the fee structure and the fee at all has really been what I've heard the most on. I've also heard a few folks say, well, don't we have enforceable litter laws in Anarundel County? Well, yes, we do. But I don't know if you followed the news lately. I think our law enforcement agency, our police department, has more pressing issues right now than going after litter violations. I still really disagree with the term one-use plastic bag, and I'm going to disagree with that because I know I reuse plastic bags that come into my home, but I know not everyone does. And for those plastic bags, they either end up in the trash, or in the landfill, or in a tree, or in our waterway. So for that reason, I do agree that plastic bags are a problem that we've been contending with for quite a long time. So with that, in just a few moments, I will be giving my support to this bill, and I appreciate the effort, the collaborativeness that we've had on the council on this legislation. So thank you.
Still better?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like my colleague, Ms. Fiedler, I do agree that plastic bags are a problem that need to be addressed. I think this potentially, for me, is one of those places where really good people can agree with a very good intent but disagree on the path to get there. And for me, I haven't been able to get to a yes on this bill, and the primary reason is it has nothing to do with the goal and where we're trying to get to, which is a reduction of those plastic bags, but more when I look back over the process that this bill has gone through as it's been before us, and we've debated all of these amendments to address unintended consequences, and then, you know, to also, you know, one more unintended consequences is how are we going to handle these situations of our WIC and SNAP beneficiaries? I'm just not all the way there. I don't know that a government mandate, a requirement, and structured the way this is structured, is the right answer. I do agree we have a problem. I am more than willing to continue to work with my colleagues to, you know, find what I think is a better path forward to address this issue, but unfortunately for tonight, I am going to be a no, but I really do, I share Ms. Pickard's feelings about the bipartisanship and the open conversation that has taken place throughout this process. I think I've been very grateful to be part of the process, so that's where I am.
Thank you. All right, any additional, seeing no additional lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1923.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 1923 has been passed.
Almost started to clap, but I didn't, it's like a little awkward pause there for the audience. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2523.
Bill Number 2523, An Ordnance Concerning General Provisions Public Campaign Financing.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to be back to talk about 2523. So if council recalls, I did a PowerPoint explaining the bill. One sec.
Just a little confusion on when public, she was really eager to testify in reference to this bill. I know that's what it was.
Well, I always love some enthusiastic support. I'm enthusiastically in support of this bill. So 2523, we did a PowerPoint for the council. Won't bore you with that a second time, but it is available for anybody to watch. To remind this council, folks watching at home, 2523 creates a voluntary system of public campaign financing for county elections. This system has... This system has proven in other jurisdictions to provide a more fair and equitable election system. At last meeting, when we went through the PowerPoint, we went through the details. I won't go through everything, but happy to answer any questions. Essentially, the way it works is a candidate qualifies by getting a certain level of support from county residents. Contributions up to $250 are matched, but only matching county resident contributions. In exchange for taking those lower limits, and receiving the match, the candidate swears off special interest, labor union, PAC dollars, and can only take $250 from individuals. We do have a technical amendment for you today, deals with some grammatical corrections in the bill. Other than that, happy to answer any questions and just encourage you all to pass this bill tonight.
Seeing any, seeing no lights, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 2523. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair and members of the council. We received 10 submissions through the online testimony tool. Everyone got a copy of an email. There is a summary posted online, and it will be added to the record.
Thank you. And I do see we had some individuals that signed up in advance, so we can have them come forth. Rebecca Forte and Alan Lang. Sorry, earlier, but I guess it's just you for right now. Mr. Lang, go ahead and state your name and address for the record in two minutes.
Yes, sir. Alan Lang, Pasadena. I oppose Bill 2523 for four reasons. I believe the money could be spent better elsewhere. I don't believe it'll be more diverse and provide for less wealthy candidates for running. It completely prohibits contributions from groups, organizations, and corporations, and I'm not sure that the controls are sufficient to prevent outside donations being made as if they came from Anarundel citizens, excuse me, residents. Although a small percentage of a very large budget, $3 to $8 million, could be better used to either fund between 60 and 160 jobs paying $50,000, or provide between 300 and 800 salary increases of $10,000 to possibly existing police, first responders, or teachers. At the last hearing, administration, several witnesses stated that this bill would diversify the candidate pool and remove financial barriers for running. However, no real stats were provided to show that this had occurred in Montgomery County. Larry Hogan and Mark Elrich were cited as proof the system worked at the state level in Montgomery County, but I would not view either as particularly diverse or from a lower socioeconomic class. Montgomery County has conducted two local primaries using public financing, and the money has, the number of people who've participated and the number of money expended has decreased since the first time they did it. So I was wondering if anyone's done an analysis to see why fewer people filed and fewer people qualified. Also, not one Republican in Montgomery County qualified for public funding. Few could qualify as they were running unopposed in the primary. Of the two contested Republican races, only one of the five filed, and he failed to gather sufficient donations to receive public funding. I am concerned that groups and organizations are barred from contributing. I could understand limiting the amount that PACs, corporations, labor unions, and political parties could donate to 250, but to completely bar them seems to be violating freedom of speech. Political clubs of both parties recruit candidates, and so finally, I'm concerned about the small donations. Recently, there was an interview in Annapolis saying that people had made contributions and found out that they had never made these contributions, or had made them in their name because of this. Please vote against this bill.
Thank you. All right. At this time, anyone who did not sign up in advance, is there anyone who would like to, who wishes to speak in reference to this bill? Please come now. This will be the last call for this bill, Number 2523. Rebecca, you called your name early. Did you want to still come testify? See, I knew who you were as soon as I saw the name. Yeah, so please come forward at this time. We'll start from the right and then go to the left.
All right.
Two minutes on you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Latika Hicks-Crafton. I'm asking that you vote for this bill, 2523. As many of you know, running for office can be very expensive. The cost of running a successful campaign can serve as a barrier to entry for potential candidates, especially for women and minorities in primary races, to name one. Fair election programs like this one that this bill will create can expand who is able to run for office and whose voices are heard after those candidates are elected representatives. It's good for democracy. In other words, this bill helps to level the playing field for regular people like me, who may be interested in running for office, who is willing to do the work, and who don't want to be pressured into accepting money from wealthy individuals or well-funded interest groups just to have a fighting chance in their campaign. Elected officials should only have to answer to the constituents they serve, not predetermined agendas. This bill is a step in the right direction. However, I think that it doesn't go far enough because it is limited to the county council and county executive elections. It should be extended to all local elections. Neighboring counties like Howard, Montgomery, and Prince George's County have already established successful fair election funds. The proof is there, and it's like that in other states who also have programs like this. So the question is not why do it, but why not? If you support democracy and creating opportunities where it's possible for us to have a pool of applicants of all backgrounds who can run based on the strength of their ideas, not access to big money, then you will vote yes to this bill. Thank you.
Ms. Forte?
Yep. Thank you. So my name's Rebecca Forte, and I live in Severna Park, Maryland, District 5. Thank you for still giving me the chance to speak. So I have spoken at county council before, so I think you can all conclude that I am not apathetic. However, I have met many apathetic people, and I know that you have too. So here's my understanding from what it's like talking to apathetic people in our county. An apathetic person in Anarundel County does not expect their representatives to represent them, and they do not expect Anarundel County to, oh, they do expect Anarundel County to be overdeveloped, no matter what they say. That's what's happening in their minds. So there is a way for the Anarundel County Council to show Anarundel County residents that you do support them, and you do not only support developers, and that is with the Small Donor Fund. The Small Donor Fund encourages candidates for county council and county executive to converse with Anarundel County residents and ask for their support, both in the form of voting and in the form of small donations. It rewards candidates for doing this. At the same time, the Small Donor Fund rewards candidates for foregoing large developer money, from people who want landfills or other things that are not what Anarundel County residents want. So other Maryland counties have already created these small donor funds in order to combat citizen apathy. The state of Maryland has already created this fund for the governor's race, and Governor Hogan has used it successfully. So it's now Anarundel County's turn. Please show that combating resident apathy and restoring faith in county government is a priority for you. Please vote yes on Bill 2523 to create a small donor fund in Anarundel County. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, is Dan Wright? You're good?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council, members of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright. I live at Huntwood Drive in Gambrells. I'm here to enthusiastically support this bill. I believe that this is an expansion of the democratic process. It gives candidates who wouldn't otherwise have the means or wherewithal to fund campaigns to use this part of the process, campaign financing. It also helps to eliminate the need for using dark money from PACs and other organizations and wealthy contributors who can remain anonymous and exercise control over the democratic process. I totally endorse what the First Lady said in her presentation. Two things I want to point out. One is that taxpayer money need not fund this. We get several million dollars a year directly into the general fund of the county from the table games revenue at Maryland Live. So this could be used to eliminate the specter of taxpayer money being used to fund this. But anyway, I really encourage you to pass this bill on this eve of the 79th anniversary of the Allied Invasion of Festung, Europa, to liberate Europe from Nazi oppression and to allow the countries there to become democracies, and I think it would be appropriate to pass this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Please return your seat, and thank you for your testimony. The public hearing on Bill Number 2523 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2523.
Bill Number 2523, An Ordnance Concerning General Provisions Public Campaign Financing.
I see there's an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 17.
Amendment Number 17, this technical amendment corrects grammatical and stylistic errors in the bill.
All right. Mr. Barrett?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Amendment's pretty straightforward, corrects some grammatical errors, longstanding policy to be against grammatical errors and typos, so please pass.
And just for clarity on Amendment Number 17, the second one, and this is, strike, line 53, strike the and and put it or, that can be a technical amendment? Just for clarity, okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Radvian, second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 17.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 17 has been adopted.
Thank you. And since it was a technical amendment, let me go back here. Is there any final, we can vote on this bill tonight, any final discussions on Bill Number 2523? All right, seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 2523.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 2523 has been passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4423.
Bill Number 4423, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Public Ethics, Public Safety, Classified Service, and Exempt Service Pay Schedules and Positions.
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our annual pay bill. I have a number of folks here at the table and an expert in the audience, so I'm just going to run down who we have here. We have Mr. Teru from Budget, Ms. Bedowski, Ms. Atkinson from Personnel up here, and Ms. Slater in the audience, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is our attorney for this one, and myself and Hannah Dyer from the administration. Sorry, Hannah, almost forgot you there. So 43, or sorry, 4423 is the annual pay and position control bill. This year, we streamline the process occasionally, or previous years, they were brought down as two separate bills. 4423 enacts new pay packages for county employees and makes changes to the number of authorized positions and position qualifications. All the changes listed in 4423 and the associated costs are reflected in the FY24 budget. There is a technical amendment coming that, there's a lot of back and forth. There was an error in the original bill describing an auditor position. Both the administration and council staff prepared the amendment. I believe we'll go with the council amendment. It was our error. We apologize. Support the fix coming. And then we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Okay, now, there's some public testimony that is anticipated. All right, we will now open up the public hearing on Bill Number 4423. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
All right, and I don't see that anyone signed up in advance on 4423. At this time, if you're in the audience and you want to speak to Bill 4423, please come up at this time. You have two minutes, state your name and address for the records, and we'll go from
Good evening, council members. For the record, my name is Joe D'Inola, and I represent the men and women of Anarundel County Professional Firefighters Local 1563. I come before you tonight in support of Councilwoman Fiedler's upcoming amendment to this bill, which keeps the existing good governance standard of merit promotions for deputy chief positions. The deputy chief position has been a merit position for close to 60 years. While in this instance, and in this moment, the fire chief may seek to appoint good people to these positions, it strips the county of necessary checks and balances for the department leadership. Like any organization, we are dependent on good policy to be successful, and good policy comes from a robust discussion of all its consequences. And robust discussion only comes from independent voices. And as important, it has been filled by a person that my members know, a person who has risen through the ranks and has gained respect along the way. That carries a lot of weight. Merit-promoted deputy chiefs are standard practice and policy for professional fire departments in Maryland, like PG County, Montgomery County, Baltimore County. They all have promoted merit deputy chiefs. The bill to have a deputy chief position be an exempt position is detrimental to the department. It can open the door to wholesale changes in command every few years and cause the loss of continuity in the department. It will cause us to lose a dissenting voice, a critical and more independent voice. The fire chief position already appoints the assistant chief and chief of staff, and that is enough, we feel. The bill will hurt morale even more knowing that there are firefighters in our organization that work 20 to 30 years or so and try to advance their careers to move up the ranks to the deputy chief position. Again, knowing the department and the county and knowing the members, the family of the members, that they will command is crucial, and it is best. Without this amendment, our leadership loses its independence. Seasoned Anarundel County fire officers are replaced with unaccountable office holders. We need our people protecting our people because unlike other organizations, the policies that we enact have dire consequences. For the safety of our citizens and our firefighters, I urge you to support the amendment by Councilwoman Amanda Fiedler or vote this bill down. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public testimony on Bill Number 4423 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4423.
Bill Number 4423, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Public Ethics, Public Safety, Classified Service, and Exempt Service Pay Schedules and Positions.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2. I'm sorry.
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, this technical amendment corrects an error in the naming of a classified position in the office of the county auditor approved as a part of the annual budget and appropriation ordinance.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All right, is there a second? All right, got a second. Madam Vice Chair, did you, or the Madam Auditor, did you want to, I know it's just a technical amendment. Any comments? Nope? Okay. Madam Secretary, please recall the roll on Amendment Okay. Madam Secretary, please read, call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Ledbetter. Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2, this amendment removes the position of fire deputy chief exempt proposed as a new position for FY24.
All right, Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I couldn't have said it better than Mr. D'Avanola. I have heard from members in the department, whenever you have appointed or exempt positions, those do tend to change with new county leadership. And I have heard from members of the department that this can lead to disruption in the continuity of operations. And after having those long discussions, I really felt that it was a valid concern, either now or in the future, and that is why I put this amendment together. So with that, I motion to adopt.
Sir, second?
Ledbetter, second.
Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I've known Mr. D'Avanola for a long time, have tremendous respect for him and the members, but the administration opposes this amendment. Interesting that you've had a number of long conversations, Councilwoman. We received this amendment at little after 1 o'clock on Friday afternoon. Chief was not aware it was coming. She had a prior commitment, otherwise we would have, she would have gladly come here tonight to make her case to you directly. The shift of this deputy chief position into the exempt service is to help her, it came at her request, to advance our fire department's leadership team. I think the administration feels if the chief's staff were overly weighted in the exempt service, I think there might be much more of a case here. But just to be clear, the chief has, including herself, 33 positions at battalion chief or higher, the leadership team of the fire department. Thirty of them, 30, three zero, are merit positions. This transition of a deputy chief changes, one, to an exempt position. It is not an unreasonable request for the chief to be able to shape her core leadership team. The fire department will still have the continuity of service in change of administrations. That's our position on this amendment. And if it, if I may, sir, there was another issue that cropped up that's not pertinent to this amendment that I skipped over at my talking points. So after we're done with the amendment, if you can, just give me a second to make another comment.
We'll do. So who's here, who can't speak on behalf of the fire department?
I have Ms. Bedowski here from Personnel who can speak to the specifics, and then you have our team here. But the chief wishes she could join us here.
And I did have a conversation with her this weekend as well. How many of the positions, so this is a deputy position, right? How many of those 30 are eligible to be selected for this position?
Bedowski Personnel Officer, she has three exempt positions. She is one of them, and then she has an assistant chief of staff. Her chief of staff position is exempt, as well as her assistant chief. Those are the only three exempt positions.
Correct.
And then there's two deputy chief positions that are currently both merit positions, and she's requesting to make one of those exempt.
Right. But who is eligible to be promoted or selected from the current crop of?
She would have to do a recruitment for that, and those eligible for it who meet the minimum qualifications outlined on the code.
Do you know, does anyone know what those positions are?
I don't think they have, Bedowski Personnel Officer, I don't think they are listed by title of who's eligible. I think it is just number of years of service in the fire department.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the testimony from the local. One of the things that I hear a lot every year when we go through budget is, if you support us, referring to public safety, police, fire, et cetera, you vote for the budget, right? And I've had many conversations with police, fire, detention officers, others, on years where I haven't voted for the budget. And I've said, guys, you know I'm with you, because if I wasn't, I would try to cut your budget, and I haven't. I think this is an opportunity for us as a council outside of the budget to be able to come in and say, we stand with the firefighters, we stand with them. This is an opportunity to show where we are on this. And with this, while I appreciate the chief's concerns and her comments, and I had a chance to talk to her over the weekend, too, I had a chance to talk to the union, I had a chance to talk to even some members of the union and sort of hear from their perspective. Ultimately, I'm going to stand on the side with the union. That's what I said I was going to do. And I think that makes sense to keep things the way they are. I'm not convinced that this change is necessary, and I'm not convinced that this change is a long-term change. I even have reason to think that maybe this happens for a little while and then it switches back, because allegedly, maybe there are people in the pipeline who are moving up who would be able to be in these positions. So maybe we're going to convert back to a merit position as opposed to an exempt position. And for me, that just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to sort of do a switcheroo now and do something for a couple of years and then come back. So I say that because I totally respect the chief's position, I respect what she's advocating for, but I'm going to stand with the union on this one, and I appreciate that testimony. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Oh, thank you. I just, for clarification, I did have an opportunity to chat with the chief this weekend. We chatted again this morning, and I shared with her from the very beginning that sometimes in this role as legislators, you just know from out of the gate where you are. And that's where I was on this. And I apologize that you only received the amendment the evening of Friday, Friday evening, but that is also the legislative process. The General Assembly, our congressional leaders, amendments fly on the fly. And we are also working on a fiscal budget. So, not intended, but I hope that 72 hours plus was enough time to read it and digest it. And this is where I landed, and I stand behind this amendment. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To ask a question and then make a statement, I think my colleague was wondering, Ms. Bedowski, how many people in the current org structure of the fire department can apply? Are you saying that it's not just a position, it's also somebody with certain number of years? So the pool to apply for a merit deputy chief could be 10 people, could be five people, or is it just division chief?
Bedowski Personnel Officer, I don't know, Jackie, do you know specifically? I'd have to go and check the code specifically on the main qualms to see if there's a years of service requirement for a certain number of years, which then may only leave the division eight to division chiefs as the pool. I just don't know, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. It's, I just wanted to ask, because I think that was what you were leaning towards. And then I wanted to just make a comment about this amendment, if I could. I also have tremendous respect for our local 1563 leadership and our firefighters and our fire department as a whole. I, this is going to be an interesting conversation up here tonight, because I feel we're at a real crossroads in Anarundel County with public safety, and public safety is changing quickly. And I think it's time for Anarundel to pick our head up a little bit and look around. We are fortunate to have a very dynamic and impactful chief who did spend time in our fire department, but also went outside and served in other jurisdictions and then came back to us as our new chief, who she was appointed with a 7-0 unanimous vote here from our, and confirmed, I guess, as a council. So while an appointed or exempt position definitely gives, it gives the chief an opportunity to look outside the current pool of applicants, the current pool of applicants can also compete for the position. So I'm actually a no on this amendment, and I do have a deep respect for our firefighters and local 1563. So we'll just have to see how that shakes out. But like, like Ms. Fiedler said, sometimes you know just out of the gate where you are on something. And I do, I thought Chief Oford made a pretty serious case for this change when she came before the council, not only with this, but she also answered a pretty serious firing squad of questions from our colleagues, and I think she did a tremendous job. So I'm going to stand with the chief, and that's where I am. Thank you.
Any additional comments? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
I hate when there are votes. There are extremely reasonable arguments on both sides, and you want to figure out a way to put both interests into play.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Amendment Number 2 has been adopted.
All right. And if we can go back to, you had a comment earlier?
Just real, real, real quick, appreciate it. There's also been a little bit of a discussion about a provision related to promotions and bargaining units in, over the past, I don't know, four hours. And just want to make it clear that if there is a collective bargaining agreement that governs, Ms. Bedowski can probably explain this a lot better than I just did. So I'm going to throw her on the hot seat right now. Thank you.
Bedowski Personnel Officer, yes, Mr. Baron is referring to 61208 section of the pay bill that's before you, talking about reclassification, the proficiency series. We were just making clarification that sometimes contracts and then memorandums of understanding with the unions are very clear on what that proficiency series looks like, and other times it is not. And we are just saying that we would, that this does not negate anything that is in an MOU with us on how someone advances from one rank to another. It's just either in the contract or it's on our proficiency advancement series in our office.
So for example, the police union just signed it, just point of order, Madam Secretary, I know this is, it's, we're wrapping up this amendment, is this the appropriate space or place, and maybe Matt, that's a question for you, to have this discussion? Okay. Because I do, before we close out this bill, well, since we're still on this particular bill of 40, what number is this? 4423. So in this case, this bill also addresses the police union's contract, and that's, I'm assuming that this conversation is geared towards. And so in there, in the drafting of this bill, language has been added and potentially modified from previous years, at least that's what has come up. But the indication from the administration is that it is not in any way, shape, or form going to impact their current contract that they have agreements with. And there is no intention over the next year, certainly, because we'll revisit this in a year as well, to modify any of those agreements that have been sort of codified via a contract.
Bedowski Personnel Officer, that is correct. The, there is no change to their current contract, or the one that begins in July 1st.
Okay.
And these are just for proficiency series from, for example, police officer, moving to a police officer first class, and then onto a corporal.
Check.
And similarly, in the fire department, when they became a paramedic.
Okay, just wanted the police to know, union that's here, that they can rest assured that their agreement will be held, you know, to a high standard, and we're going to agree to that over the next year, certainly, while this 4423, obviously, when it passes, is enacted. So I'm comfortable with that. 4423, I'm sorry, let me go back to this. Bill Number 4423, as amended, will be heard on June 20 of 2023. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4523.
Bill Number 4523, an ordinance concerning public safety, traffic, vehicles on sidewalks.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a rather simple piece of legislation. It was brought to my attention by the bicycle advocates of Anarundel County and a very specific constituent who I believe is going to speak this evening. This is one of those sections of the code that just accidentally, I think, over the years, was left there. It's very archaic. It limits the time period that someone with a mobility device, wheelchair, motorized wheelchair, can use a sidewalk. Many of our folks who have mobility challenges still work and still need to get to work, and they don't always have a job. So it's really critical for them to be able to utilize our sidewalk network in the county and have it be legal. This was so reasonable, made sense, and thanking my colleagues for their support and cosponsorship of the bill, and I look forward to hearing some testimony this evening.
Mr. Baron?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Like the sponsor noted, it's a no-brainer. Pass the bill.
Guess we should see if that's in county code, that term, no-brainer bills. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4523. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
And I do see there are two individuals that are signed up in advance, Ms. Sandra Bishop and Mr. John Corn.
Mr. Smith, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to do this, but I would like to be added as a co-sponsor for this no-brainer bill. Thank you.
I guess I'll jump on that bandwagon as well, since it doesn't require any brains to do it. That probably doesn't sound right. I'm sorry, Ms. Bishop.
Hello, my name's Sandra Bishop. I'm from Silverona Park, and I am here to speak in support of Bill 4523. I'm on the board of Bike AAA and the parent of three young adults with disabilities who can't drive, which makes bike-ped infrastructure important to our family. While researching the specifics regarding bikes on sidewalks, which was passed by this council unanimously in 2021, thank you, I found the language being addressed in this bill. I'd like to thank Ms. Fiedler for her prompt attention and action after I brought this to her attention, and Ms. Hummer and Ms. Pickard for cosponsoring, and the additional cosponsors now. I'm sure all of us remember feeling frustrated during the pandemic when our ability to move freely was put on hold. Restrictions on our freedom of movement are never popular. One of the quickest ways to get a teenager's attention is to take away the car keys. One of the hardest things to do for our aging parents is convincing them they should no longer drive. But if you can't drive, like my daughters, then achieving that degree of independence in our very car-centric society is much, much harder. Finding wording that states people with disabilities who need to use a special vehicle for mobility independence are restricted to using sidewalks, sidewalk areas, or bike paths to daylight hours only was disheartening. The fact that there was another phrase deleted from this line of text when Bill 5021 was passed, but the restriction limiting people with disabilities to daylight hours was retained is unfortunate. The legislative summary for the bill at that time included a list of representatives from several different county departments, but none from the Department of Aging and Disabilities. I recommend not only that Bill 4523 be passed, but that future bills that include language related to people with disabilities be reviewed by someone from the Department of Aging and Disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corn?
Got it. Thank you. John Corn, Silverna Park, representing Bike AAA. Also, in this case, I can represent the Bike Commission, which I chair, and the Transportation Commission, which I'm a member of. As you know, our mission is to promote safe biking and walking, because the walkers are not organized the way the cyclists are, to provide safe, accessible, equitable, affordable transportation, to promote health, to reduce traffic, to protect our environment, and to make this a more affordable county to live in. This bill, I'm glad to hear the term no-brainer, because I think it is. I think this was an anomaly in the code, and I'm glad it's being corrected. I thank Sandy for finding it, and I love a bill that has bipartisan support. Grateful, too, Councilwoman Fiedler for getting on this so quickly during budget season. But there are hard ones ahead. There's a lot of code renovation. Hopefully, you saw the memo from the Bike Commission about this. Road frontage only looks at vehicles. Scenic and historic roads protects vehicles to the detriment of walkers and cyclists. APF transportation, it's only for vehicles, and it's only for capacity. It's not even for safety. So this is capacity. It's not even for safety. So this is just, this is an easy one, but there are some hard ones ahead, and there's a lot of code renovation we need to do if we're going to make the county multimodal and get away from our reliance on single occupancy vehicles, as we've all already agreed to in Move Anarundel and more recently Walk and Roll Anarundel. So I hope we can get our code and our budget all aligned behind these objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Please turn your seat. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in reference to this bill? All right, seeing no movement. The public hearing on Bill Number Forty-five, twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Forty-five, twenty-three.
Bill Number Forty-five, twenty-three. An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Traffic, Vehicles on Sidewalks.
Any additional comments or discussion?
I just wanted to say, we can call this bill a no-brainer, but apparently Ms. Fiedler is the only one that had the brain to come up with this idea. So the rest of us were asleep at our bicycles.
Well, I think I was focused on that, the walking crew that he was, Mr. Corn was referencing earlier. Had to put them together. Madam Secretary, seeing no lights, additional comments, please call the roll on Bill Number Forty-five, twenty-three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
I just have to say thank you to Ms. Bishop. This is what local government's all about and local representation. Thank you for reaching out to me. Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number Forty-five, twenty-three has been passed.
Congrats. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Nineteen, Twenty-three.
Resolution Number Nineteen, Twenty-three. Resolution Appointing Members to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
All right. Ms. Pickard, I'm sorry. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's twenty-one. I'm looking at the wrong text here. Is there admin? Oh, there you go.
Good evening, Kaylee Schultz.
I'm just so used to calling on Mr. Barron, so I didn't see him move, and my brain didn't trigger, see the no-brainer, didn't trigger to realize it was just you.
No problem. Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. Resolution Nineteen, Twenty-three Appoints Two Members to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission. One is a council-nominated individual named Donna Rover, who is unaffiliated, and then the other one is the county executive seat for Amy Thomas, who is a Democrat. Both seats are currently vacant, and I hope you move this resolution tonight so that we can have a full ethics commission again.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Seeing none. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number Nineteen, Twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
Don't see any resolution. And I don't see anyone that signed up in advance as well. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on Resolution Nineteen, Twenty-three? Seeing no movement. The public hearing on Resolution Number Nineteen, Twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Nineteen, Twenty-three.
Resolution Number Nineteen, Twenty-three. Resolution Appointing Members to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number Nineteen, Twenty-three has been adopted.
And Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three.
Resolution Number Twenty, Twenty-three. Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anarundel County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
All right.
Thank you, Kaylee Schultz, again from the County Executive's Office. Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three Appoints Deanna Morgan to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. Her seat is basically already a seated position. She replaces Carol Allison, who retired last fall. She is the professional representative from the local Department of Social Services. So this is just a formality to appoint her to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion? All right, seeing no lights. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
And no one signed up in advance. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed on Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three.
Resolution Number Twenty, Twenty-three. Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anarundel County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
All right, seeing no lights or discussion, please call the roll on Resolution Twenty, Twenty-three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number Twenty, Twenty-three has been adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Twenty-one, Twenty-three.
Resolution Number Twenty-one, Twenty-three. Resolution Urging the County Executive to Establish a Work Group to Review the County's Public Infrastructure Needs and Capital Program Planning Process.
Thank you. Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank Mr. Smith and Ms. Hummer for also cosponsoring this resolution. We're, it's funny that we're in the midst of going through our budget, and, but this idea comes out of a very interesting time in county history, and I want to acknowledge the administration for collaborating on this initiative and the DPW team, Karen, Henry, Beth O'Connell, and David Braun, for taking time to very methodically walk me through all that goes into crafting our capital program. This resolution calls for us to work together by bringing in representatives from the private sector, the auditor's office, and the council to seek best practices from other jurisdictions and industries facing these same challenges. My hope is to build upon the internal work that has already happened and continue to problem solve in this difficult economic climate. We have tremendous public infrastructure needs in our county, and we may find that there is necessary code reform, staffing enhancements, or other process reforms through this work. Our current team at DPW works hard and smart with the resources provided, and I applaud their ability to deliver over 600-plus projects currently in the capital program pipeline. While we are in the midst of a cost of cost escalation challenges, there is also historic infrastructure investment coming from both the federal and state level. I look forward to seeing this collaboration bring about impactful results, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, like I said, and Ms. Hummer for co-signing, co-sponsoring, and I look for the support of my colleagues on this resolution. We have a lot of work to do, and I hope we'll have some, have some good work ahead.
Thank you.
If the administration agrees.
Yeah, this is, I definitely want to say a few words on this. For the last seven or eight years, when I was on the council previously, one of the things that stood out for me as we were going through the budget process was the capital program. I'm a numbers guy. I work for Fort Meade, and it's, it became something alarming, at least in my head, and I started this conversation with Alex Tcheknovich, believe it or not, back in 2016, I believe, when we were talking about the school capital program. And over the years, as the capital program, or not necessarily the cost that we are allocating for it, but the actual cost of things that we are building, has continued to rise in a manner that is inconsistent with having a successful, long-term capital program in the future. And so we've seen things go from, you know, three, $400 a square foot, upwards of $800 a square foot, and even higher. And that is not a sustainable path if we are going to make sure the taxpayer dollars are spent wisely. And so when I started running for office here again, here last summer, one of the things that I had brought up was the unsustainable or unsustainability of the capital program. And it's something I think the taxpayers deserve us to be sort of intuitive on, and also to be, make sure that we're guarding the cost in a way that's going to be effective for, you know, the next generation of folks who are going to use the facilities that we build with the money that's procured by the taxpayers here in this county. And so this is just the start, this task force or this team that's going to be put together to look into this. I hope over the next year, we can identify cost-saving measures when it comes to capital programs so that we control the cost from, for projects that we're building, so that we get that into a more reasonable cost sort of metrics, if you will. And so for me, this is a very important start. So it's good, you know, it's easy for us to come up here and spend your money, but when do you ever hear us really putting the effort in to saving it? And if you really want to talk about real savings, it's on the Capitol Side of the House is where we're going to make a lot of those savings, I believe. And so I'm hopeful that we can uncover ways to change how we do construction, potentially, work with the school system. Obviously, this is going to cover what we do on the county side of the House, but I'm hopeful that eventually will bleed over into the school system as well. So I'll let them, make them aware of that via this testimony. So looking forward to this, this team being put together and working really hard to identify some of those cost-saving measures. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I think this was one of the first things you mentioned to me. It's something Councilwoman Pickard has talked to me about at length, and a number of you. Just let me introduce my team before I forget again. Ms. Dyer, our Director of Fiscal Affairs for the County Exec, Ms. O'Connell from DPW, and Ms. Blair Klasmeyer, our legal counsel is hanging out if needed. Administration strongly supports this resolution. In fact, a lot of work has been going on over the past couple of years, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. O'Connell to speak to some of the work that's already been done and that we look to build on with forming this work group. Look forward to including some additional parties, private sector partners, our auditor, and others, council members obviously included. So look forward to do this work, and just want to say, you know, the County Exec has, if you know him, you know he always is asking why does it cost what it costs. And we have been working hard to look for ways to build those assets that are going to last for 40 years, right, that are going to be used by not even our kids, but our kids' kids maybe, and making sure that we're building them well and building them as efficiently as possible. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. O'Connell to talk a little bit about the work that the internal processes at DPW, their internal work group has already delved into and how we plan to build on this.
Hi, Beth O'Connell. I'm the DPW Deputy Director for Engineering, and as you guys know, we handle the capital program for everything except Board of Ed, Community College, and OIT. So we're committed to continuous improvement in our delivery process, and I really appreciate the words from Councilwoman Pickard. We had a great discussion on Friday, and I hope to have a similar discussion with each of you who are interested in the workforce, or sorry, in the work group, about the detailed work that goes into building our capital budgets on a project-by-project basis. We have a variety of methods and techniques that we use at the project level to help reduce costs. It varies from project to project. We look at value engineering, we look at risk management, and we also, of course, as the bill mentioned, or as the resolution mentions, we look at aggressively pursuing grant and low-interest loan financing for each of our projects. We've been engaged with the administration and outside private consultants over the past year to actually work on the streamlining of our capital program. As we all know, time is money, and that's never been more true right now in a time of high inflation. So the faster we can get our projects out the door, the cheaper they are. So we're happy to work with the work group to help explore additional opportunities and strategies for cost savings for the overall program.
Awesome. Awesome. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple things. Number one, can you add me as a co-sponsor on this resolution, please? Thank you. Second, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Smith, because I think the first time that we met immediately after he was elected, we were at the Green Turtle in Pasadena, and this was the, something that he talked to me about all the way back then. So I'm excited to see this coming forward, and I think this is going to be good. I would, while we don't need to add it to this, I would just urge that, I think you also should look at the impact of some of the legislation that's been passed by this council and what that has done to costs. For instance, project labor agreements, prevailing wage. I think those things should be part of this as well, because those should at least be discussions. Now, whether the council says, look, ultimately, that's a decision that we're going to eat that cost because we think that's the right thing to do, fine. But I think that should be something that's part of what you ultimately look at when you're assessing what's driving the cost in terms of construction. I think the impact of legislation passed by this council, you know, you could go back the last five, seven years, something like that, that would be an interesting piece of this as well to determine how that impacts the bottom line. So I would just ask you to consider that when your work group is meeting and you're looking at things, not just how we build them and why we build them, but what the requirements are that we're building and how that's impacting. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. I just want to add to what Mr. Volkey has expressed. I've been eagerly awaiting this resolution. I think you mentioned it, Mr. Smith, at the sofa store, not the green building. But so I feel like you're the CIP review OG, as the kids say. So if, with that, if I could also be added as a co-sponsor to the resolution, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Appreciate it. And for those that don't know, our CIP program is in a range of $900 million. Just think about that, $900 million over a six-year period. We allocate resources to build things. A good portion of that is the school, goes to the schools, totally get that. But just think, if we could save 10% of that, that's $90 million that literally could go to building something else. And so I think we can find ways to drive that cost down, and $90 million is a lot of friggin' resources, considering that we got a lot of needs here in this county, and we're, you know, we don't like raising revenue, but we do what we have to do, and this is one of those ways I think we can do that. So, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really just wanted to ask to be added as a co-sponsor. I can't, I don't know if I'm six or seven.
All right, I see another light.
I mean, you might as well add me as well. You had me at cost savings, so I mean, it's...
Oh, thank you.
It now says the entire county.
There you go. So any further discussion? Seeing none. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number Twenty-one, Twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, we received two submissions. Everyone here should have gotten an email. It's included in the summary that's posted online, and that will be added to the record as well.
All right. I don't see if anyone that signed up in advance, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Resolution Twenty-one, Twenty-three. All right, seeing no movement. Public hearing on Resolution Number Twenty-one, Twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Twenty-one, Twenty-three.
Resolution Number Twenty-one, Twenty-three. Resolution Urging the County Executive to Establish a Work Group to Review the County's Public Infrastructure Needs and Capital Program Planning Process.
All right. Any, seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number Ninety, Twenty-one, Twenty-three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number Twenty-one, Twenty-three has been adopted.
And I do want to make a call on resolutions for the final reading. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Twenty-two, Twenty-three.
Resolution Number Twenty-two, Twenty-three. Resolution Approving the Nomination of Members to the Anarundel County Human Relations Commission.
Madam?
Thank you again. Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. Resolution Twenty-two, Twenty-three Approves the Nomination of Three Members to the Human Relations Commission. We've had three vacancies in the past few months due to personal and health reasons, and so therefore I would like to urge the council to put in a county executive seat of Jaden Ferris to serve, as well as a District Six recommended seat of David Michaels, and a District Seven seat of Michelle Denton to serve on the Human Relations Commission. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion on Twenty-two, Twenty-three? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number Twenty-two, Twenty-three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number Twenty-two, Twenty-three has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Twenty-three, Twenty-three.
Resolution Number Twenty-three, Twenty-three. Resolution Approving the Submission of a Name for the Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board.
Good evening again. Kaylee Schultz for the County Executive's Office. This resolution approves the submission of Kayem Starkey to be reappointed as an alternate member for the Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board. He is about to expire as an alternate member and would like to be nominated to be reappointed as that. Happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number Twenty-three, Twenty-three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number Twenty-three, Twenty-three has been adopted.
And finally, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Twenty-four, Twenty-three.
Resolution Number Twenty-four, Twenty-three. Resolution Approving the Appointment of a Severn River Commission Member.
Good evening again. I just want to say thank you for taking all of these appointment resolutions tonight. I really appreciate it. Resolution Twenty-four, Twenty-three Approves the Appointment of William Okapstan to fill a vacancy on the Severn River watershed. He does reside in the watershed, which is a huge plus, because those ironically are not easy to find of those willing to serve. But he is very ready and willing, and I hope that we can move this tonight so that he can start serving.